Board members, we are now going to, we are considering a property contractual matter related to the relocation of Lexington Middle School. As a reminder, Dr. Guyton has recused himself and was not part of that discussion. Let's see, we've got two motions on this. Do we want to do one each and then talk about it? So let's go with the first motion. Do I hear a motion regarding the property contractual matter relocate, I can't talk, related to the relocation of Lexington Middle School?
Madam Chair, I move that the board accept the administration's recommendation to amend the option agreement dated March 20th, 2019 with Teresa W. Betzel to remove item 4.04 of Article 4 contingencies.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Salters, who will walk us through these motions, and then we'll have another motion after this that we will be voting on.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This motion relates to item 4.04 in Article 4 contingency section of the option agreement that was entered into with Ms. Teresa Betzel on March 20th, 2019. Item 4.04 indicates buyer shall be successful in acquisition of adjoining properties having TMS number 004300-04-048 to satisfy the acreage and/or access needs for the school site, and the administration is recommending the removal of that contingency item.
Okay. So at this point, that is the motion we have on the floor to remove that contingency. So let's go ahead and take a vote on that, and then we'll read the next motion.
You had discussed.
Oh, thank you. Do we have any further questions or comments regarding that at this time? Okay, no? Okay, we'll take a vote on the first motion. All in favor of the motion, and Ms. Green, will you reread it one more time?
Sure. Madam Chair, I move that the board- I move that the board accept the administration's recommendation to amend the option agreement dated March 20th, 2019 with Teresa W. Betzel to remove item 4.04 of Article 4 contingencies.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green. And we did have a second from Dr. Powers. So all in favor of removing this contingency, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do we have any opposed?
No opposed.
Okay, so the motion carries, it is a five to one vote with one recusal. Okay, at this time, I'm going to call on, I believe it's Mr. Anderson that has the second motion, please.
Madam Chair, I move that the board accept the administration's recommendation to approve the purchase of two pieces of property per an agreement dated March 20th, 2019 with Teresa W. Betzel. The properties are known by Lexington County as TMS number 004300-04-075 and TMS number The consideration for this property is $1,594,575. This total equates to $47,500 per acre.
Okay. We now have a motion on the floor from Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. We now have a second. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Salters to walk us through this, and then board after that will open it up for discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Direct your attention to the screens. Have some exhibits for your reference this evening. First of all, I'd like to have you recall that the relocation of the Lexington Middle School campus was part of the facility study recommendation and then carried to the board before the 2018 bond referendum and became part of that program. And so the voters voted in November of 2018 and approved unanimously to relocate this campus among all of the other building program projects. What you're seeing here is a prototype rendering of the Lexington Middle School site. This is actually Pelean Middle School that we're currently building. It may look very familiar to the current Beechwood Middle School campus because we just opened it in August, and that was the first version of the prototype. This rendering here in Pelean is version two, and so this Lexington Middle School campus would be version three of that prototype. I just want to put that out there for you to have a reference to see, get a feel for what the school might look like. Talking about the proposed site that you have a motion for now, I'm going to use my pointer on the screen on the left, or try to here. So this is the current Lexington Middle School site. Just to orient you, we have North Lake Drive, and we have Highway 378. Dreer Street comes in right here. If you follow this road on down, you come into the courthouse. This is Highway 6 that comes down, you know, to the dam if you followed it all the way out. Old Cherokee is right here that cuts over and meets up with Pilgrim Church up in the top portion of the screen there. You follow this on around, and you end up at the Publix there at the top of the hill. So just to kind of orient you to where the property is, we've talked about this several times before. I want to zoom in for a few minutes and look at specifically the current Lexington Middle School site. As you recall through our conversations in the past, the current Lexington Middle School site is roughly 16 acres. It's kind of hard to make out some of the buildings there, and I think I've just lost my pointer, there it is. But you have the main campus here, there is a small practice field in the back, there's an entrance here on Abbey Lane, there's an entrance, a small entrance to the office area, and a small parking lot here off of North Lake. There's an exit right here that's off of the teacher parking lot, and then over here, get back to it, this is Dreer Street, and there's an entrance to the facility here, and then an exit here for the buses. And so this site has served the district for many, many years. It actually was the original Lexington, not the original, but it served as a Lexington High School when it was built. Originally, the school was located right down the street, and it served grades K through 12. But now, that was served Lexington High School until Lexington High School opened in the late '70s at its present location. It became Lexington Middle School at that time. There is, on this campus now, a series of buildings. If you're familiar with the campus, there are a number of buildings students have to move in and out. It is a challenge for us to secure because of all of the door access points. It has very limited parking, very limited stacking, as we call it, for parents to queue up and drop their students off. It also has basically no storm detention on the property. This property was developed prior to the stormwater regulations and stormwater management guidelines that our county has in place now. And so if you look very closely, when you're sitting at this red light, you can see a ditch right here in this corner, and that's really the only spot where stormwater is collected on this site. So it's very limited. So it presents a number of challenges to try to redevelop the campus, and so that's why in the building program, it was looked at and discussed and decided to relocate the campus. Couple of other things that are going on here, and I'll point these out. We are working with the town of Lexington, and they are actually in the process of relocating Dreer Street. And so Dreer Street comes up here, and on my next slide I'll show you, it will curve around. This intersection right here at Dreer and North Lake will close and no longer be accessible, and that is a goal to improve this intersection. There are 43,000 cars a day that travel in front of this campus. And so by taking that intersection from four legs to three, that will improve the flow of traffic going through Lexington. It will cut off and restrict our access to the campus, to the current site. We also will lose this driveway access right here, this exit. We will lose this entrance and exit to our main office area. Those driveway access points will go away, and so we will be limited to a driveway here and a driveway here off of Abbey Lane. And these further demonstrate the development that's going to occur. So if you look at this map, Lexington Middle School is sitting right up here on the top. This is actually Lexington Elementary School down here, and you can see they're going to relocate Dreer and curve it around and connect it just past where Azelia Drive connects in right now. And this will, you know, continue the one-way pair project that has been implemented in the town, and so it will allow two lanes of through traffic all the way, you know, through the intersection there at the current Dreer Street. So it's slated to provide significant improvements to the traffic flow in the town of Lexington. But it does impact our campus. And again, this is another shot of that other end of that traffic development, and so Lexington Middle School would be down here in this corner, and you can see the through lanes. The nice thing about this is when the town finishes, if you make your way this way, you will no longer sit at this intersection if you are going on towards Columbia. There's two through lanes of traffic that will continue to flow and not have to stop at that red light. So that's a pretty powerful movement that'll occur there, and you'll have to stop for a left-turn movement. But those are things the town of Lexington is doing. We've worked with the town of Lexington about this relocation. They're very pleased with our plan to move the Lexington Middle School campus away from this intersection as it is the most traveled intersection in this area by far. So with that being said, we evaluated basically every parcel of land that was in the Lexington Middle School attendance area, and we looked at, we had option agreement on these two, actually three parcels. The lower parcel here in blue, and then the red parcels, the red parcels are the ones that we are talking about tonight. The blue parcel, we originally were looking to try to site the school in the middle of these parcels so that we would have a secondary access point to Cherokee Trail. And the board, in your process, you take appraisals on property, and as you negotiate an option agreement, and the seller in that particular case, and the board cannot come to terms on a price that was close to the appraised value of that piece of property. So when that happened, we re-diverted and focused our efforts on this piece of land. And really, the idea is that, you know, by focusing here, we will spend a little bit more money improving Old Cherokee Road. By buying this, we would have spent a little bit more money on land and done less improvement on Old Cherokee Road. So it's kind of one or the other, but it will work either way. So we're now focused in on the red parcels, and so I'll just zoom in on that briefly for you. And just to point out, the current traffic counts on Old Cherokee Road, there are about 10,000 cars that move across that road every day versus the 43,000 that move across the road at Lexington Middle School now. And I would remind you that many of the 10,000 cars that move across to go to Lexington Middle School make up part of that 43,000, because many of those folks are going to Lexington Middle School to drop their children off now. So there's some duplication of count there. So looking at this parcel specifically, looking at the topographic, the slopes of the parcel, you can see we're about the 360 elevation line. It does go down, there is a low point on the site around 320 here in this area, and then comes back up to, you know, 344 on the backside of the site here. And I just point out, just for your reference, this is the Beechwood Middle School site that we just developed, and we were at 436 on the high point of that site, and then we're down at 372 here. So, you know, roughly 50-foot elevation change, and what you'll find as we develop, and you can see this at Beechwood, we use that terrain to our advantage, and all of the retention and stormwater management occurs in the lower portion of the site, and you'll see that in a few minutes. The stormwater management will occur primarily in these low areas of the site, and so having a slope to a site is not necessarily a bad thing. Looking at the wetland area on the site, there is an intermittent stream that has been defined that runs through this property. It is not, it doesn't have water in it all the time. You get a heavy rain, and it does fill and drains into 14 Mile Creek, which is down here. The wetland area is a 50-foot buffer on each side of that intermittent stream, and so that's considered the whole area. So there's about four and a half acres of the 33.57 acres, which, or, you know, roughly 13 and a half percent that make up that area. And that may cause some concern for you, but I'd like to point out, just as a reference point, this is Lake Murray Elementary School site. In this campus, there are over 25 and a half acres of wetland area, and we have several other sites that are of similar condition. So a wetland doesn't mean that you can't develop a particular site. In our approach and strategy, we develop around wetlands, we don't mitigate if we can avoid it. Mitigation means you basically convert that wetland into, you destroy it and you convert it into regular dirt, if you will, and you have to, you know, pay to a mitigation bank and so forth. We don't do that process, we just avoid the wetland area. And you can see this is about 43% of that campus at Lake Murray Elementary School.
And I would say as a previous parent there, it was, we actually enjoyed walking that area, and it was an attraction to that school.
Yeah, the campus of the school, I'm not sure if Ms. Stanley's here tonight, but the school uses the campus, I mean, the wetland area, they actually have an area here in the front where they do some learning opportunities, and so it's a really good, they can make use of it and for trails and things like that as well.
And I would add to that, since this will be a middle school site, with outdoor education courses being so popular, I know Metaglin Middle School uses their wetlands area quite extensively for those classes.
Right. Thank you. And so looking more closely at the site layout itself, and I'm going to kind of breeze through this because my next slide is a color version of this, but we have Old Cherokee Road, this is the neighborhood across the street, I think that road is Cherokee Pond Trail. So the road will align with that intersection there. We have, you know, the school oriented to the front of the campus, or the front of the road there. I'm just going to go ahead and get to this slide because it renders a little bit better, you can kind of see the trees and everything. We're required through county zoning ordinances to maintain a buffer around our development, and so you will see a buffer, and in some areas, even like in the back right here where the buffer is thin, we may end up having to do some planting. We have to maintain a six-foot opaque view around the perimeter, except for the front of the school. So you accomplish that through trees or fencing, but typically we try to do trees because it's more environmentally friendly. But we will have a large drive entrance here and significant stacking. This is similar to what you see on Beechwood Middle School's campus, and so that stacking loop is over 2,000 feet, it's working very well for Beechwood, keeping traffic off Highway 378. And this is, you know, this is still an early site plan, so this road may actually curve around and create more stacking around this parking lot and then loop back in. But we have three, or actually four crossings of the wetland, and these crossings will be completed the way in which we did River Bluff High School, crossings of those wetland areas where it's an arch culvert, you just span the wetland area with an arch culvert, and you do not impede on the wetland in any way. And this will be a pedestrian walk bridge here, and then drive bridges in these areas here. This entrance here will be for bus service and will feed to the back of the school, and there'll be some staff parking in this area and here as well, but the bus loop will be back here, separating our bus riders from the entrance that the car riders use. And that is a thing that the Office of School Facilities, the State Department of Education and SEDOT really push because they try not to mix cars and buses together because of the danger of those big yellow buses and smaller cars moving around on a campus. And so that's something that we really can't accomplish on the current site. The buses and some of our parents use the same entrance point to get onto the campus. So you'll also notice that there is a full football field here. It is not designed for, you know, major competition or anything like that, there won't be any stands there, lights or anything like that, it'll be similar to our other middle school fields. But it does also have a track associated with it, and currently the Lexington Middle School campus is not large enough to have that track capability, so we're excited about bringing that to the students there, which our other middle schools all have, or, you know, they all do have that capability. So with the exception of Lexington Middle School currently. So we're excited about that. You'll notice some of these blue areas, these are kind of placeholders for storm detention, and so that will be where we capture our stormwater and slowly release it. The footprint, the red footprint is the building. This is the same as Beechwood and Pelean, we've got our classroom wings over here, cafeteria in the back, main office in the front here, and then we have our gymnasium and little theater areas there. We are looking at also providing some connectivity to our neighbor there, Palmetto Hall. They have, you know, a number of students there, and that connectivity, we've done that at several of our neighborhood schools or schools adjacent to neighborhoods, New Providence Elementary most recently, and Beechwood, and then Metaglin Elementary as well, have a walking path connection to the school. And so we'll look, try to partner with Palmetto Hall to get some access for those students so they don't have to, you know, get in cars and move about on the highway. So we, as we mentioned in the option, I want to kind of go back just a second, and how we came about the price of this property. As I mentioned earlier, we did two appraisals of this property, and while I have this up, it's a good graphic here. The front section of this property, one of our appraisers classified as commercial property. And you notice as you ride down Old Cherokee here, there are a number of commercial businesses that are popping up in that area. And so that, six acres roughly, was appraised at about $130,000 an acre, while the rest of the residential area of the site was appraised at $48,300 an acre. If you average that together, that ends up being about $61,066. The second appraiser took a little bit different approach, these are both independent appraisals, and they just valued all of the property as residential, and they put a value on that of $47,000 an acre. And of course, these are all based on comparable sales in the area, and so as you recall from the motion, we offered $47,500 per acre, which is on the very low end of the range between the two appraisals from 61 and 47. So, and that's, that was what was accepted on, let's see, May 22nd, when we did our Exhibit B ratification, which sets the price. So we have a number of safety features that we're excited about offering at this campus, and we have all of our students under one roof as we really try to get. And so as I mentioned earlier, Lexington Middle School has a number of buildings, a number of access doors, things like that, that really make that a challenge. We also have all of the stacking room to get cars off the road, so we're excited about that.
Dr. Little?
Can you compare that to Beechwood for just a moment, the stacking?
Yeah, and so what we'll end up with here, as I mentioned earlier, we'll have over 2,000 linear feet of stacking, which is similar to what we have at Beechwood Middle School, and that will accommodate a school of this size. Of course, the initial capacity, we're looking at for 1,200 students. The core facilities will handle 1,500 students, and that's the prototype model, and that's to handle the size and the growth in the community long-term, and so we designed these roadways to support that, that number of cars and buses on our roads. And so looking at, this is a very small photo, but I can hopefully orient you. So, you know, you can see the school site, we have the main intersection here, Highway 6 going out towards the dam, and this is Old Cherokee running in front of the school. Cherokee Trail runs down this way. And so this is pulled from our traffic impact analysis. Significant work was done with the South Carolina Department of Transportation, and a traffic study was completed and reviewed extensively by them. And what happens is, is they do traffic counts and set an impact for us relocating the school there. And we looked at a number of intersections all across the Lexington area, because really you're talking about changing traffic flow from going to the current Lexington Middle School site to this new site. And so we had to study a number of different intersections across the area, and you roll all that stuff up together, and then DOT comes out with recommendations of how to mitigate the traffic. And so what we are looking at doing is on Old Cherokee Road here, basically starting just below the car wash that's there with the intersection of Pilgrim Church, you may be aware that the county has some federal funds to improve that intersection under a safety grant, but it only goes for that intersection itself. There are no other road improvements slated for Old Cherokee Road, this section of it, on anybody's books. The town is doing some traffic work, but the county as well, but there's no, this is not on anyone's radar. So we're going to take it from that improvement down to where it's already a four-lane section, and we will, this road will end up being a three-lane section all the way through. And what that means is you have a driving lane, you have a middle lane that serves for turn lanes, and then also it could be a median, you know, that runs through the middle, that's kind of, you know, it's divided, it has the dashes, it's not a concrete median or anything like that. And then you have the opposite through lane as well. So the idea behind creating that three-lane section in traffic language is it gives cars who are making traffic movements right or left a place to go so that through traffic can continue moving forward, so it enhances that traffic. So we'll do that for about a mile of this road. And then here at the Old Cherokee and Highway 6 intersection, we will be installing left-turn signals. If you recall coming down the big hill there at Highway 6 from Home Depot and all that, there are left-turn signals now to take a left onto Old Cherokee, but we're going to be putting a left-turn signal on the opposite side so that you can make a left to go on towards, you know, a lot of people cut through Andrew Corley and go on, you know, out to Corley Mill. So that will facilitate that left-turn movement at that intersection. And then there'll be some potential improvements here with the way these roads are used, and that's still in development with DOT, but just minor changes if anything there. But we will have turn lanes in front of the school, acceleration lanes, and there'll also be a traffic signal installed here at the intersection of the school entrance-exit as well as the neighborhood across the street. So that will also facilitate movement in and out for the neighborhood and for the school during those key times of the day that traffic increases. The idea behind developing this site, you know, if we develop a site like this, we get, we're required to make these road improvements. These road improvements are used, you know, 180 days out of the year basically, and they get pretty heavy volume twice a day for that 180 days, but they're used the rest of the year by the community, and will serve a good purpose for traffic flow, you know, year-round. And if this site was sold to a housing developer, in our experience, what we have seen in the community is the housing developer might have to put in a turn lane right in front of the neighborhood that they would create, and that's it. And they could come in here and put, you know, a couple hundred homes on here and create a number of traffic problems, but not really have to do the mitigation that we are doing here. So, and just kind of scaling back real quickly, just to orient you, again, the site is sitting here on Old Cherokee, and I just want to point out all of the little rectangles, if you want to call them that, all over this area. The current Lexington Middle School site is down here off the screen, and you can see this site is well situated among all of the housing developments in the area. And I should point out that this area right here has also recently been purchased by Essex Homes and is also being developed and will look like these little rectangles, actually probably more like these little rectangles here soon because they're very densely populated homes. So very well situated position right here in the middle of the students and customers, you know, parents that are going to use this campus. So with that, I know that was a long explanation, I'm happy to recap and answer any questions that you have at this time. Dr. Little, you had something?
Well, I was just going to say, and the idea there is that all those families and whatnot are not having to drive to the, one of the business intersections in town, they're going right here near their homes and then heading off to work.
That's correct.
Board, you've heard the presentation. We do have a motion and a second on the floor, and I'm going to open it up for the board to ask questions or make comments. So would anybody like to add anything?
Yes, I would just like to say, in April of 2019, when we first began discussing this, I asked if there would be an opportunity for community feedback after the due diligence is complete, and then emailed to Dr. Little, I said, "Other than citizens' participation... And then emailed Dr. Little, I said, "Other than citizens' participation at board meetings, will there be community meetings, surveys, or a public hearing? And will the district be posting the due diligence reports on their website?" And he said, "Our process allows for many opportunities for people to comment over a number of months. Once due diligence is complete for the LMS property, we are working on an informational session for the area." So I would like to make a motion that we table this until the next meeting, and that we have some kind of community meeting where we can get feedback from citizens. Because the board, actually, I'd also like to say, the board has not seen any of the due diligence related to this property.
Board, Ms. Garris has asked to make a motion. It will not go forward unless it has a second. Do I have a second to support her motion? Hearing none, the motion is declined. Any other discussion, board? I would like to say, this, my children went to Lexington Middle School, and that was a few years ago, and it's a hard school to get in and out of. That is a super busy intersection, and that school is just jam-packed on that site. The thing that led me to support this, and I have heard from many of you, we have received phone calls, we've received multiple emails, we've received multiple comments online, and we've had several of you come and speak at citizens' participation. I see Mr. Calhoun back there. I know he has fielded questions at the school site. And I feel like we have heard from you. What leads me to support this decision is, first of all, there's not a lot of land available. Everybody wants to live near the highways, and the developers want to develop near the highways. And this schematic right here, with all of those yellow squares, and also knowing that right across the street, is how many homes is Essex proposing?
Several hundred. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but several hundred.
Right. And then the piece of land that we have not been able to negotiate, that's a possibility of that being another neighborhood. So based on the fact that these are the children, every home, just about every square represents a child, that those parents will funnel out of those homes and go to that location, it's about as good as we can come up with at this present time, that we can afford, and we're getting a really good price on this land. So I feel good about this decision.
And then again, Mr. Salters, remind us, you know, the 2018 bond referendum passed, so we now have a mandate, as dictated by our community, to find a new location for Lexington Middle School and build. So again, if it's not this site, talk to us about, and we have been in dialogue, I mean, we've had this discussion, I've pushed you out here, but what other sites are there? Because again, we have five years, I believe, to satisfy that bond referendum.
Right. The goal is to have all of that work done within the five-year period. And of course, we have a little bit of time after that, you know, a year or two to expend those bond funds. But, you know, it's really not about waiting for five years. If we wait for five years, I would venture to say that these two sites will be gone. And, you know, a couple of the other sites that we've looked at that are left will be gone. You know, I don't want to bad-mouth another person's property, but I can tell you that we've looked at a number of sites, all of the sites that are of any size in this area, and I can put them on basically one hand. And the location of those other sites are not conducive to traffic flow in the town of Lexington, and do not support the campus like this site does. And, you know, you might look at this one site right here, and, you know, it's been on the market for a number of years. I believe it's some 55.8 acres. And I would encourage you to go out to the county tax map and turn on the wetland layer, and then have a conversation with me about it. You'll see why that site was not considered. But there, you know, we've looked at everything out there. I would remind the board that we started a different property purchasing process in response to involvement and input in this process. And so up until this purchase, we would have brought this motion tonight to the board for the first time. You would have acted on it, and that would have been the first time the community would have ever known about us buying a piece of property. Back in December, we brought a motion to authorize us to look for property, and then back in March, we brought a motion to enter into an option agreement, which put this property out into the public. And so you've had six months' worth of opportunity to receive input, as I know, Ms. Smith, you indicated you have, and we all have.
And I would like to add to that, that Ms. Hill and her communication team, they've put it on all of our sites, that we have on Facebook, Twitter, they've all addressed that we were looking at this particular piece of property, and people, I've read the feedback there. We got a lot of feedback there from the community. Any other questions, board?
Well, I just want to add, I actually attended Lexington Middle School in that current location, not 70 years ago, but, you know, 40 years ago. And it's past time to relocate that facility. I mean, it really, it's kind of, just looking at some of the pictures that Mr. Salters was showing us, the exposure that that campus has to safety concerns, and with the imminent changes to the traffic and the roads around it, not only is it going to be a safety hazard, but it's gonna be completely locked in with only two entrances and exits. And seeing the proposed layout for the new campus, and one of the things that we, you know, our schools provide are kind of community centers for the neighborhoods that are around them. I know Beechwood has become quite an asset for the folks that live in Summer Lake and Meadow Glen Middle School, you know, there are families that walk and use the track and the sidewalks there. And I'm just so excited about, because there's really not any community spaces in that area as densely populated as it is. I really think that it's gonna be a wonderful, wonderful addition to that area of Lexington, and it's gonna provide the benefit of moving that school traffic and our students to a safer location. I'm very excited about it, and I really appreciate Mr. Salters and his entire team, the engineers that we use for all of the things that I don't understand, to bring this to us in a way that I can really visualize that school, and I'm very excited about it.
And Madam Chair, if I could just point out one additional thing. I will tell you, through the course of our development and conversations over the last six months, we've had a number of community members in the neighborhoods around reach out to us, and we have a plan, should the board take action tonight to move, to close the property, we have a plan to go out to those communities and meet with those homeowners' associations, and talk with folks about the plan and what it means for them, and how we can best be a good neighbor, and also meet with the, obviously, the parents of Lexington Middle School and the faculty there, and talk with them about what you've seen tonight, and get that messaging out. So we're very excited, should you pass the motion tonight, to get started on that, as early as tomorrow, actually.
Well, I'd like to add one more thing. Actually, a lot of the folks, the community members that have contacted me, are very excited about this possibility, because our schools were good neighbors. Our campuses are clean and well-kept, and they're safe, and they're good community assets, and many of the folks in that area would much rather see our beautiful campus there than another 400 houses, just because that's inevitable. If we don't move now, that property is, that seller is looking to sell it, and it will be another giant neighborhood.
And I don't want to foreshadow the future, but I've got a daughter in AP Economics, and she talks a lot about opportunity costs. So again, the opportunity cost of not relocating Lexington Middle is we can't deliver on some of our visions with respect to adult learning and other things here in Lexington County, which I think there's huge support by our business communities, because it's another engine for economic growth, to have more adult learning opportunities here in Lexington County, so.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have another question. I know you said you had looked at several other properties, and I know several of what you told us about. Did you look at any that had houses on them, or were you just looking at vacant properties?
No, we look at multiple parcels, and parcels that have houses. We've done that before, where we've bought a tract of land. In fact, Centerville Elementary School had some homes on it. So we've done that before. We are not afraid to look at multiple tracts and put those together. So yes, definitely.
So was that done in this instance, though?
Yes, we've looked at every parcel in the Lexington-
That information was just never given to the board. I would've liked to know exactly what else was looked at. And also, I'm just gonna say again, instead of having community meetings after we take a vote, I think it would be very beneficial if we went out and talked to people before, because just posting things on the district website and talking about them in board meetings is not getting the word out.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Garris. Any other questions or comments? One thing I would like to add, just that we have heard from several key business owners and people who are in the chamber and active in the community, and they're very excited about this school, because they do see it as a success for the community. So just wanted to say that. Anything else, board? We will now take a vote, and let me remind you that Dr. Guyton has recused himself, he will not be participating in this vote. So all, I tell you what, since it's been so long, Mr. Anderson, reread the motion one more time.
Okay. I moved that the board accept the administration's recommendation to approve the purchase of two pieces of property per the agreement dated March 20th, not 2019, with Teresa W. Betzel. The properties are known by Lexington County as TMS #004300-04-075 and TMS #004300-04-016. The consideration for this property is $1,594,575. This total equates to $47,500 per acre.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And Ms. Green has already seconded this. So, board, all in favor of this motion as presented by Mr. Salters and his team, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. We have five in favor, one not in favor, and one recusal. So thank you, the motion does carry. And Mr. Calhoun, he said you're starting tomorrow, so you better get ready. Here we go. I know those parents at Lexington Middle School will be thrilled.